Senator Paul Quarterman, I'm joined here this evening with County Commissioner President John Barr, Commissioner Derek Harvey, and County Administrator Michelle Gordon. The purpose of the seat now is to hear from you. And I think by the amount of folks that have showed up here today, we can tell obviously how important the concerns are here in our community. We want to hear from you, the citizens, the business owners, property owners here in our community. And we want to hear your concerns and your issues. But more importantly, we want to hear your solutions or proposals, and how your city, county, and state governments can work toward addressing and resolving these concerns. So we're going to open it up here for some opening comments from other colleagues who are here this evening. And then we're going to turn it over to you because again, this is all about you. This is all about what the concerns are here in the community and what you guys want to share with us here this evening. Each individual will have three minutes to speak, and that's an effort to be mindful of your fellow citizen. We have a lot of people here this evening and want to be able to hear from everyone. So we need to be mindful of each other. That would be great and appreciated. And again, we're going to have some open comments here from our fellow colleagues. And then we look forward to hearing from you. So thank you.
Thank you, Senator Quarterman. It's a pleasure to be here this evening and on behalf of the county commissioners, we want to thank everyone that's came out this evening to participate. As the senator has said, this is your evening to give us information and feedback. We can't fix things if we don't realize or don't understand all the concerns and what may be on your mind. So on behalf of the commissioners, all five of us, we appreciate the time here this evening and with the fact that there is so many, I'm going to pass it on to save time for, to give everyone an opportunity to share.
Thank you, and I'm Commissioner Derek Harvey, and it's good to see everyone here tonight. And I know there's a lot of interest. And first, I'd like to thank Senator Quarterman for his efforts to put a public spotlight on the safety issues and other challenges in Hagerstown that are impacting county residents. I mean, residents of the city as well as county residents who workshop, have families in the city, and travel back and forth, go to entertainment in the city too. We need the city to thrive, and as I have said over the last few years, you know, it's really important that Hagerstown be successful. And I am concerned about the safety issues and at least the perception of insecurity that I've heard from so many people over the last three years. Because just the perception of insecurity can undermine economic development, growth, and revitalization efforts that are important to the city leaders, the county and the state, and especially the people who reside here. I'd also like to thank Mayor Martinez and the city council members for having hosted three meetings that have provided insight into the complex issues already. And I hope everyone has seen the good work that they have done. And they've identified a number of important intersecting issues that influence crime in our region. Lastly, or most importantly, I'd like to thank the people who are here tonight and those who are listening on Facebook that we're live streaming, who are going to share their thoughts. And I want to thank those who have come to our meetings in the county, who have expressed concerns, those who have emailed, those who have just raised those issues at meetings that we've had, whether we've run into people downtown, or at a fair, or at a Ruriken meeting. It's important to hear from our constituents so we get a better idea of what people are facing day to day. People who experience property crime, those who feel intimidated by a homeless person walking up to them, asking for money as they walk the street towards the library, or have concerns about needles and drugs on playgrounds, or have their cars vandalized. Simple property crime. Their stories need to be heard, and I hope we hear some of those tonight. They need to be acknowledged and recognized. And we need to hear those stories so that we can better understand the issues related to the crime and what people are experiencing. I have found over the years when I've worked on different issues that the seeds of failure in getting to the right solution are often because we do not get the diagnosis right in the beginning. Getting the data, understanding the context, understanding the impact on the human dimension, our communities, it's really important. And any one issue can get us bogged down and be an excuse not to move forward. My focus has been particularly in one area, law enforcement, but I understand there are a range of complexities that intersect here. For us to get the diagnosis right, we're going to need to hear from you, explore your ideas, get your insights. And hopefully, we'll be able to identify tools that we have in the toolbox as well as the authorities that we have that we can work jointly with the city and the state and others in the community to address these problems. And with that, I turn it back to you, Paul.
Thank you, Michelle.
Oh, I didn't know Michelle was here.
Michelle Gordon, County Administrator. Just wanted to thank everyone for coming here tonight to express your concerns. Really looking forward to hearing your feedback so that we can potentially come up with some solutions together. It's important for us to make sure that we're working together as a community to make sure that we are creating the safest environment for not only our residents, but for visitors, our families, and for the businesses in the area.
Thank you, Michelle. We're back. We're just going to start here at the beginning, and I will call individuals up if you guys have signed up, if people have indicated whether they want to speak or not. And at the end, we can go through the list. If there's anyone else that wishes to speak, there will be that opportunity as well. So first up, we have Angie Fry. We asked.
Good evening. I am the widow of Mark Frye, and I'm here this evening as an individual who has experienced firsthand the criminal-friendly laws of the state of Maryland. Mark was murdered at Columbia Machine in Smithsburg, Maryland on June 9th of 2022. It was devastating to lose my husband, and I never thought that I'd have to beg the Washington County courts to prosecute the boy who took Mark's life, but I did. For killing three men and seriously wounding two others, the killer was given a plea deal and placed in a mental facility where he can request to be released annually, putting the grieving families through the hell of reliving this repeatedly. We received no empathy from Washington County courts. I have emails from prosecutors where they mocked me for wanting justice. I attempted to get help from the state of Maryland by emailing every email address that I could find on their website. The only person who responded was Senator Quarterman. He met with us, he listened to us, and as a result of those conversations, two bills were drafted and presented during the last legislative session. But there is no appetite in Annapolis to help or support victims. Neither bill made it out of committee. I'm not giving up on finding a way to bring about positive change, but I am only one person. My voice alone has minimal effect. If we unite our voices, the words are stronger. In an economy where some families require two or more incomes to make ends meet, the nurturing of our children have suffered. Youth are often on their own. And on their own, they find things to do that may not be in their best interest or ours. They get into trouble. There's no consequences for their actions, so they do it again and again, each time stepping over the line just a bit more than the last. Our news feeds are littered daily with accounts of violence and killing. So you may ask, what have I done to bring about positive change? I have presented signed petitions to the courts. I have spoken in interviews. I have testified at two Senate hearings, and I'm here this evening. I continue communications with Senator Quarterman in hopes that we can lay the groundwork to improve the treatment of victims of violent crimes and stop coddling criminals. I have also teamed up with the Community Foundation of Washington County and established the Mark Allen Frye Fund for Life, Liberty, and the Pursuit of Happiness. This memorial fund has been established to assist youth in finding productive outlets for their passions and energy. My hope is that we can help provide the kind of nurturing opportunities that my husband enjoyed during his youth in Washington County. Any donations to support this effort can be made to the community of Washington County's website and selecting the Mark Allen Frye Fund. The more donations we receive, the more opportunities we can offer and start investing in our community's future. Thank you.
Next, we have Alva Moses.
My name is Alva Moses. Thanks for letting me speak. I happen to be brought by in this town because, you know, I dealt with addiction. And my community where I was, I ended up dying. They brought me here to get help, right? And, you know, I ended up reading your article, Mr. Quarterman, and, you know, about the city being under siege. And I understand that, right? But with some diseases, some things that happened, you know, this city has gave me hope. You know, with the Wells House, with different instruments that play part, you know. I would end up dying in Baltimore, right? But this has given me strength to be able to give back. I'm going to school to become a recovery specialist. You know, I am looking at my community every day. I come out to these streets, I speak to people, I try to give them hope. You know, I have hope right here on my forehead. But the thing of it is, it's not through my words that I want to give them hope. It's through my actions. And that's why I wanted to come here tonight. Because if you don't get that chance to speak, you know, some people won't be heard. You know, and I just want my town to be heard. Because I claim this town now, right? And I, you know, I would bleed for it, you know. But I don't want it to bleed incessantly. You know, I understand what Mr. Quarterman, you know, was talking about some Band-Aids in that article, about things that can be done. You know, but it takes a community to be able to put this together, not an individual, you know. And, you know, the one last thing I do want to say, I want to say, you know, I appreciate, you know, Mayor Martinez because she's shown a lot for this city. And I just want to be able to help, you know, with everything that I can. So thanks for letting me share.
Next, we have Ethan Lowen.
Good evening. This forum is in response to the public outcry about the crime, the violence, the drug dealing, and the drug addicts who shoot up and walk the streets with empty eyes. This forum is about the homeless crisis whose most recent incident were two individuals performing sex acts on a bench as high school students walked by. The amount of violence in our city puts us in the top 12% of America's most dangerous communities. In the span of just a few years, we went from being a somewhat average city to a place where people now talk in terms of the amount of crime they see around them or the crime they've been victims of. How did we get here? Our neighboring communities are nothing like this. It's just us. Four years ago, our city council chose to join in on the defund the police movement that began the second round of Black Lives Matter riots in 2020. Our city council reduced the number of police officers by 20%. Additionally, the Black Lives Matter organization wants politicians to vote in policies that prevent police from being in the community where people know them and would-be criminals know that a police response isn't far away, to where police instead stay away until a 911 call is made after a crime or serious problem already occurred. Our city council embraced this agenda while surrounding communities did not. Even the city closest to us, Frederick, refused to implement Black Lives Matters policies. This has had several outcomes. First, as consequences for hurting people have been removed because police simply are no longer around, criminals have gotten bolder and more active. Then drug dealers moved to where it's easiest to do business. And naturally, drug addicts came to where it's easiest to continue their addiction. Then, as always happens, the homeless population increased in tandem with the size of the drug-using population. The city's council's response to the public outcry has been unconscionable. One council member ordered the senior police officer present at a city council meeting to say good things about the council's attitude towards crime. Several officials have made statements to the effect that arresting criminals is racist or that arresting criminals does not reduce crime, despite the fact that all the crime we're talking about today is what has occurred since this council reduced the police department's ability to arrest criminals. Two council members even stated that they do not have to employ a police department at all. How do you respond to that? This is the kind of thing that's written about in history books, where history teachers will someday have a class, watch our recent city council meetings, perhaps even this meeting, and ask those students, how did a society, a community, get to that point? What would you have done if you were alive at that time? This is an entirely self-inflicted wound. We voted these council members into office. We have an election in seven weeks. One of the nine candidates for city council, five continue believing in the defund the police philosophy, and four do not. No one is coming to save us. There is only us to do right by each other, and we have to create a community that has the safety children need to grow up with confidence, as opposed to believing their destiny is to repeat the addictions and crime they are forced to witness all around them. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Bill Johns.
I suffer from OLD, so I had to write down anything. How are you? Good, thank you. Senator Quarterman, we were recently at a meeting where I asked the question of, there is any way we can change the laws that are inhibiting our police officers from being able to do their jobs?
Can you bring the mic to your voice, Shar?
Yes, can you hear me now? All right, the question was, if you thought that we would be able to change laws that exist in Annapolis that are inhibiting our police officers from being able to do their jobs? He said, no, because of the majority situation that is in existence in Annapolis. What can we do as a public? What can we do to help change that? And I'd like to know what laws they are that we would need to focus on. My other question has to do with the, what was that which the council did isolate as the most important things that they were concerned with with regard to what's causing our problems here and why we're not able to actually do anything about it? If we could know what those, what, you said there were several that were isolated as problems that the council were able to determine. So I'd like to know what those are, so we know what to, if there is change to be made, and we can make that as voters. What are we looking at? What have we got to do?
So again, with the format here this evening, we want to hear what your issues are as well as what your proposals and solutions are. We'll have a time at the end to have our comments to address everybody. That's why we're taking notes here as each person comes up. And so happy to answer that here, you know, in short order. But again, we encourage you to use your time here. Again, any proposals or solutions you may have that we can work collaboratively together to help our community.
Alva represents a large portion of what I consider to be a solution. We have people on the street that are poor. They're not causing a crime, but they're on the street and they can't afford housing. I'm a money-first guy. Got to have money in order for us to get these changes made. Or like kind contributions from the city, like empty buildings and those things that are not being utilized. The day reporting center is not being fully utilized. The adult drug court's not being fully utilized. We have these assets here, but I don't see them filling up since the pandemic. I don't see them filling up like they did prior to the pandemic. I don't see any efforts made for us to drive people that are committing minor crimes here in the city to be channeled into, in front of a commissioner or magistrate or someone that can move them towards programs that are supervised and housing that is supervised and transportation that is supervised to get them to where they need to go. If they're going to go before a court, they don't need to go to jail. They need to go into rehabilitation. They need to go into programs that tie to supervised housing and programs and mental health and all the things that we know we should be doing. I don't see enough of that happening. And I don't see enough of funding going towards those things to make them happen. So that is why I want to know what these laws are so we can identify what we need to do, where we need to focus in order to change things. And to just give to Alva's point, he is an example of where he went from the street. He went through treatment. He went through supervised housing. He went through programs. And now he's working at Wells House and through Healing. He's a contributing person. And at one point, Alva can tell you what he was and what kind of condition he was in. We've worked together. The man knows what he's talking about. He works with me. And I can, I can tell you from personal experience that he and dozens of other people, the Gatekeepers, True Healing, Wells House, Second, Lasting Change, all the sober houses that are in Washington County and Hagerstown, contribute to taking people off the street and placed in safe places and rehabilitated. And when I see the numbers, I see roughly about 250 people on any given day are off the street and in better conditions than they were. And they're not, they're not contributing to crime. They're getting better and they're going back to work. And if they can't go back to work, if there's something wrong, then we are encouraging everyone to try to find where they can get the treatment that they need, but not left on the street.
So. Thank you, Mr. Johns.
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
Next, we have Kathy Paddock.
Good evening. Okay, I moved back to Hagerstown about 10 years ago. Live right down by City Park. Now that it's getting dark, it's still dark early. I don't go out as early, but I'd go down at 6:00, 6:30 and just do my rounds. I never felt afraid or anything. I do worry about just even coming in here, the young children who are riding these, their bikes and their boards, I don't know what they call them. I would like to see something done about that, these kids. Maybe perhaps when the new facility opens, they can go there, ride, hopefully. I don't live in fear. I never have. I like the city. I like the town. I walk a lot of places. My concern, I'm not afraid of the homeless. I walk past them. My heart just bleeds for them because they need some help. I don't know what the answer is. We are not the only city in this country that deals with homelessness. As far as violence, I thankfully haven't experienced that. I know a neighbor of mine was jumped in broad daylight and got beat up a bit, but that was some years ago. That can happen anywhere, anytime. I just want to point out that one thing that does disturb me is that anytime there is something like a shooting or, you know, involving guns, we never hear about a source here. Some years back, when the red flag laws were being proposed, which were laws that would take away a gun if they had a call from a family member who was concerned because one of their family members was making threats. I don't know if it was the city council or the commissioners, declared Washington County, Washington County Second Amendment Sanctuary City. So I kind of think, well, this was something that was supposed to help solve some issues with guns. But how can you tackle that if you don't even want to try to do one little step to make it safer? I guess I'm done, but thank you very much.
Next, we have Corvus Crump. Something else I correct?
You did.
All right.
Good evening. I'm Corvus, and I want to thank Senator Quarterman and the commissioners for putting this together and taking public comment. It's vital to democracy that folks with power speak to the folks on the ground who elected them into those positions and even those who voted against them. I want to go on to say that public safety is a real issue. The fact of the matter is, too many people are victimized by violent crime. Anyone who is hurt or killed by another person is one too many. However, when we talk about public safety, we need to talk about the physical danger that people are put in when they are forced by poverty to live in unsafe housing, in disrepair, or no housing at all, or the physical danger that comes with going hungry, going without medical care, or for children, not having access to childcare. And reducing public safety to just the victimization, the victims of violence really narrows the scope of the problem of people who are in danger in this town. But for now, let's set aside, let's put that aside. And I want to talk about some measures that are proven scientifically to work at reducing violent crime, by which I mean spending on education and on public welfare. Multiple studies, which I found in frankly fewer than 20 minutes, and would be happy to share with the county commissioners and with Senator Quarterman, show that increased spending on things like education and food assistance reduce violent crime rates. This can be compared to traditional public safety measures such as police spending, which in 60 years of aggregated data are not proven to reduce violent crime rates. If we want to see less violent crime in the city of Hagerstown and in Washington County, then we must properly fund our education system and our other public services. If you want to see the streets of our county safer for ourselves and our children, then it's important that we fund the programs that actually work to keep kids safe, like our schools, our public works, and childcare. Returning to a broader definition of public safety, these measures don't just improve public safety by reducing poverty, making sure kids don't go hungry, making sure their kids can afford safe homes, and get jobs that provide healthcare. If we want the people of this county to be safe, not just from each other's actions, but from deprivation and from public hazards, it's time we properly fund public safety measures. Fund schools, fund childcare, fund programs like this. Thank you so much for your time and have a terrific evening.
We're going to replace the batteries here. Hopefully I'll correct some of the audio here. She's doing that. Next up is going to be Sean Porter.
Scott Monahan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so what that guy just said is basically give money to social programs to make crime stop. If you put bad guys in jail, they can't rape your daughters. If you actually enforce the law, they're less likely to break the law in the future. I was just involved in a trial where the state's attorney's office tried to give a PBJ to a violent, deranged Turkish immigrant Muslim who attacked an elderly Jewish man, knocking him unconscious in two punches, sending him to the hospital. So this gentleman who was posting on pro-Hamas websites after the attack happened, threatening a state's witness, they were offering to let him out on the streets without a single day in jail and without a conviction and without any sort of strings or attachments, and without paying $3,200 in medical bills for the man's transportation and care over at the hospital. This happened in Frederick, so I'm not talking about here. But it's the state of Maryland. The state's attorney's office does not prosecute crime unless you get all pissed off and start yelling and acting insane, which and start yelling and acting insane, which is what I had to do to get justice for Sam Rosenbloom. Sam Rosenbloom, thank God, happened to know someone who knew Alan Dershowitz. We got the video to them and as soon as the state's attorney's office found out that Alan Dershowitz may be coming in and intervening in the case on behalf of the victim because he wasn't being treated fairly, then all of a sudden they dropped the deal and it went to trial. We had a great trial. The man was found guilty. And the sentencing guidelines still only called for a suspended sentence for a second degree assault, an unprovoked second degree assault, which is what I consider it to be. But thank God Judge Dino Flores saw through the BS, saw the state was trying to kill the case, saw that they only introduced two out of 34 pieces of videographic evidence they had against this gentleman. And he actually took my statements, took the statements of the victim into consideration. And he went outside the guidelines and gave the guy 15 days in jail, which still translates into nine days after you get good time. They don't keep you in there the whole time. And then a suspended sentence of 18 months. That is the same attitude we have up here in Washington County with the criminals. The bottom line is if the police are able to actually enforce the law, arrest people, and then the prosecutors don't just null cross half the cases or give PBJs to every person walking by, uh, then maybe the crime will go down. But if you keep on saying they need help and counseling and all that stuff, that's great. But the bottom line is if you do the crime, you should do the time. You should take it like a man. If you break into someone's property, you know, you gotta go to jail. That's the way it is, but that's not what's going on here right now. So the bottom line is between that and the fact that Sheets offers higher starting pays for shift differential people who work in the evenings. You know, they're offering the same or higher pay rates than Hagerstown police are. How many people want to get shot at when they could be in the safety of a Sheets making sub sandwiches at night as opposed to being shot at on the street? So we need to up the pay for the police officers. Thank you for your time.
Next is Chris Jenkins.
Good evening. My name is Chris. Uh, I'm just coming here today mainly I had a complaint about the HQL license when you go on the website. Uh, after you get your training, you, they give you a serial number to type it in. But the website is like extremely vague and it's just got so many different options and not user friendly at all. And I'm going to go ahead and say that that is probably like planned obsolescence from what I'm, what I'm gathering because they don't want people to have protection for themselves is what I believe. So, uh, somebody can get in contact with the people who do that website and make it more user friendly. It's absolutely ridiculous even that you have to go through, you know, pay hundreds of dollars and get all this training, um, just to have your Second Amendment. And I will also comment on the situation where the Jewish man, he was out protesting on the street and Hamas supporter comes up to him, punches him in the face, knocks him out cold. He's a senior citizen. And it was like everything that we had to do to try to get a fair trial for this happening. And I just, I think it's a travesty that, um, we had to do so much legwork improving what this, this guy's intentions were. After many viral posts online, he's, you know, basically confessing to enjoying punching the guy, all this stuff, and now he only gets 15 days for knocking out a senior citizen who had a sign he didn't like. Thankfully, he got some kind of conviction for it. But, um, the, uh, and the, and the huge problem I see is all the undocumented immigrants that are coming here. You know, even in Honduras, they have on TV, on the news stations, they're telling people, go to Montgomery County, Maryland, because that's a safe haven for you. And we don't know who these people are. I'm not saying that they're all bad. A lot of them here want to just come here and work. But I mean, I mean, what, they, they get to not pay taxes and we have to pay taxes. And, you know, it's, it's extremely unsafe walking the streets. You don't know who a lot of these people are. Nothing against them, but, um, you know, we gotta, we gotta have law and order in this country, I believe. And just, um, it's like, come on, guys, we can do better. Thank you.
Next we have Michael Byers.
Good evening. I'm Michael Byers. I'm the owner of Byers Market Grocery Store on Berhans Boulevard. A lot of people know this Byers Stop, I guess. Also in the building, which circumference the, the whole block, the police department is right beside us on the next block. And established the business back in 1987 and expanded to improve our store over the years to meet our customers' needs. Our business used to thrive and the customers loved visiting us. We took pride in the fact that we offered something to our local community that they could not get other places and our customers seemed to really appreciate that. Over the last several years, however, the area surrounding our store has really declined, which has brought with it long lists of challenges. We have experienced a significant decline in customer numbers due to how unsafe they feel when they visit, when they visit us. There's a steady presence of drug users, prostitutes around our property. I spend much of my day running these people off, calling the police, you know. Sometimes they're there in a short period of time. Sometimes it takes a couple of hours. My employees have been assaulted. They've had weapons drawn on them. These individuals come in and steal all day long. We have witnessed several drug deals happening right inside our store. We forced to close the dining room and restaurants due to overdoses, people sleeping in the dining room area inside our bathrooms. These are addicts, prostitutes sleeping on the sidewalk behind our store, throwing drugs out in the open. I mean, they walk down the street carrying a big can of beer in a brown paper bag. Nothing gets done to them about it. When you yell at them, tell them to move along, they laugh at you and say, you know, it's public property. There's nothing we can do about it. My daughter went to work up there the other morning, a couple of months ago. A prostitute was pounding on the window, throwing food at the car and cussing her. And, um, because my daughter asked her to move along because she had a new trespassing letter. She told her to get off the property. And it's like the trespassing letters don't mean anything to these people. The health department has handed, you know, needles out to the people out back. And so we find needles laying all over the place. Back on McPherson Street, it looks like a trash dump. I mean, there's pizza boxes, food containers, cups, blankets. I mean, it's, it's terrible. If something needs to really happen to change the direction of where we're going right now. And I think it needs to happen soon because I don't know how a business can survive in Hagerfield. Thank you.
Next we'll have Tom Stoltz.
My name is Thomas Stoltz. First, I'd like to thank you for having us here tonight and taking the time to hear from the community. I'm going to briefly touch on two subs, I'm going to briefly touch on two subjects. I'm going to briefly touch on two subjects as it relates to public safety. Gun control and policing in that order. Gun control. It sounds good and it feels good to say it, but in fact, it is an intellectually lazy position to take. Historically, when cities have allowed otherwise law-abiding citizens the right to carry concealed weapons, crime rates against persons have dropped dramatically, rapes, robberies, assaults. Conversely, cities with the toughest gun laws in this country continue to have the highest rate of crimes committed with firearms. As with most Democrat policies, the outcome has the opposite consequence of the intended effect. There already exists plenty of laws on the books that address those committing crimes with a firearm. However, our legislature and our prosecutors have gone down the dangerous path of restorative justice. The legislature has embarked on wild social experiments that have included not being able, not being able to prosecute juveniles in very lenient sentences for others that prey on our community. Actually holding criminals accountable just might be key, a key component of reducing gun violence. Gun-free zones, what the legislature tried to pass, create easy targets for those looking to harm and kill others. When a bad guy with a gun is doing violence, it is only a good guy with a gun that is called upon to stop it. Democrats want to simultaneously defund, harass and humiliate police while disarming our law-abiding citizens. Another Democrat recipe that we are now enjoying the fruits of. I would like to know how many gun permit holders have committed a crime with their firearm. I suspect the answer is close to zero. If there was one case of a crime committed with a permit holder, the media would be running it nonstop and it would forever be exploited for a Marxist political agenda. And you want to restrict gun law-abiding citizens' right to carry guns so that only drug dealing, gun-toting thugs and now gangs of illegal immigrants can easily prey on our community, leaving us completely helpless. The legislature's recent attempt to restrict where you can carry a firearm in public is blatantly unconstitutional. I'm going to move on to policing. There is a policing crisis in America. It is not because of corrupt racist violent police. It is because there is an all-out assault on the men and women who chose law enforcement as a profession. The idea of defunding or reimagining police is one of the stupidest, most insane concepts the Democrats have put forth yet. Policing doesn't need to be reimagined. It needs to be re-erected. Police need the support of their organizational leadership in addition to the support from the politicians. This assault on police have left police departments decimated in terms of morale and manpower. Police get paid the same amount whether they do the bare minimum or whether they proactively and aggressively seek out crime. Officers under the constant threat of discipline and prosecution are making the rational choice to do the bare minimum as anyone similarly situated would. I understand that this was all part of the Democrat plan. And while Democrats claim to be champions for minorities, it is the minority communities that suffer the most under these policies. The police don't need lip service. They need respect, support and a proper living ways to better endure the horrid political climate that has been created by the left. And I'm sorry, I ran out of time.
Next would be G D Ashberry.
Do I just hold it the whole time? I need a breath. All right, you can hear me. Wonderful. So my name is G D Ashberry. I'm the executive director at Reach of Washington County. I'm the current chair of our local homeless coalition. I raised two amazing girls in this county that went to public school. I had a north and a south who are on to college and looking to change the world. I love it here. I work here and I'm here to help. I want to share with you some things while we have the community listening and you. We have two community resource guides I share everywhere we go. This is our local homeless coalition street guide. You can find this on Reach's website, Hark's website, CAC, emergency management all over. If you wanted, I'm happy to share it too. This is a quick snapshot designed to fold in half and slip in your back pocket. So if you see someone homeless panhandling by more than three minutes, I would talk about change the way you give, but I would love that another time. Right up here at the top are the six shelters in Washington County and Hagerstown. Six shelters. Reach's shelter is a cold weather shelter designed to keep as many people alive in the winter as possible. We are part of a larger continuum of care coordinated entry collaboration in Washington County. The other five shelters are year-round. The rescue mission is adult men and the other ones are for families of various ways. The next thing are support centers. There's drop-in centers, day programs, whatever you want to call it, every single day. They're Monday through Friday, summer Monday through Thursday. The hours vary. On here are places that homeless can take a shower and get in and out of the weather, hot or cold, get their mail sent, go to the bathroom, get hygiene supplies. In addition to this, our local library where we're sitting is a resource for everyone and they are open across the county and a place for people to get out of the weather, hot or cold. I highlight this because I often hear, oh, there's only one shelter. Or, you know, if Breach was open year-round, then there wouldn't be homeless families. So our shelter is adult men and women. So the other thing is the Hark Street Guide. Our friends at Hark Hagerstown Area Religious Council, they do Micah's Backpack. This is a list of every clothing bank, food bank and soup kitchen in Washington County. They keep this updated and this lists the numbers, the address, everything. These are two wonderful resources for people in need to help with food, shelter, drop-in centers. So I'm hoping you know that this is already a wonderful collaboration we have. There's more to do. There's never enough resources, but you need to know that first. We have a coordinated entry program between all of the shelters, the providers, homeless outreach, CAC, Horizon Goodwill, all that work together, our case managers that they go by a by-name list to go through the homeless in Washington County. The other thing is before I run out of time is please remember free will. That for some people in those faces, those tended hope people we're seeing in the doorways, no matter what you do for them, they're not ready for change. They don't want services. They don't come in for services. So I know at a time where we are all, um, concerned and stressed, just keep that in mind that there, there is a coordinated effort. And unfortunately, those 15 people you're seeing, they don't want services. They don't come in. They're too deep in their addiction or their own device someone selling them. I wish I had more time. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Dave Smith or Smart or Hager Street. Close enough. Apologies.
I'll be very, very brief. My point I want to make is in Hagerstown, I want to thank first of all Senator Quarterman. At least we have one member of our state delegation here and we have the county commissioners. What I don't see are people from the city of Hagerstown. None of the council members, the mayor, none of the city officials are here tonight. And this is a Hagerstown problem.
We're here.
They're here? Good. Thank you. Thank you. Good.
It turns out to speak up here, but they're.
That's fine. That's good. I'm glad they're here. The biggest problem I see in Hagerstown is the issue of denial of a problem. Yes, there are a lot of good things happening in Hagerstown. A lot of progress is being made. But until our officials recognize that we do have a serious problem here and are willing to try to address it, I don't think things are ever going to be solved. I went to a forum in the North End a few months ago. And believe me, I have the greatest respect for the police in this town. The officers, the chief, they do a great job. But they're under the pressure, I know from city politicians as well. And I heard one of the city representatives from the police department making the comment that there's a misperception of crime in Hagerstown. That it's just in people's minds that we have a serious crime problem. And ironically, as he was speaking, two officers ran out the back door to address a shooting in Hagerstown while we were being told that this is all in our minds. So I'll be very brief and say that until we recognize in Hagerstown that we do have this problem and are willing to admit it, nothing is ever going to be done.
Next we have Paul Moll Downey.
Thank you, Senator. I hope you folks can hear me and I'm keeping great for you.
It's hard. Can you come to the mic?
I used to run up here. Senator Quarterman, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, very briefly, we're all here tonight about problems in the city of Hagerstown. Look on the table, the head table, do you see anybody here from Hagerstown? Now, I know there's one or two people here, but why aren't you participating? That's the question. It indicates that you don't really care about what's going on in your city. And I would recommend, I would recommend that you have a chance to show your indignation the next time there's an election, which is about three weeks from now. So if you don't like what's going on, you don't like the way the funding is going, then elect someone who has a better view of what you think. Thank you.
Next we have Arthur LaRue.
I probably need about 179 seconds. So I don't have much to say, other than, I know that throwing money at things... I work here and I know it's... Okay, I was very bad. Throwing money at things doesn't necessarily help. But I also understand that the county commissioners could change in the property tax structure, I think it is, and get the disparity grant of, I don't know, three or four million, not sure how much it is, but it seems to me like that might be a good idea to get that money. So, that's it.
Next we have Casey Yonkers.
I'm one of the retired Hagerstown City Police Officers. I retired in 2013. I started my career in 1987. And at that time, if you tested for a police department, there were two or 300 people that were also testing for that one position. It doesn't happen anymore today. So it's a competitive business that we're in. I became a police officer because it was a passion and I believe it was a calling. And I tried to be the best police officer. I was not always the best police officer, but I tried to be the best police officer that I could be. I retired after 26 years in 2013, and then I became a police officer in another state. And I recently retired from there after 10 years. My pension was 52% of my pay. At that time, it was $60,000 a year, I'm not embarrassed to say that. The city of Hagerstown should be embarrassed that it's that low. The last eight years that I worked, I did not get a pay raise. So my pension is 50, was 52% in the particular plan I took. I get $29,000 a year. That was in 2013. There is no COLA. Other agencies around us have COLAs. They also have things that are called drop programs, where you can continue to work and have money placed into an account, basically a self-directed IRA, which also helps you in retirement. So in 2013, that $29,000 buying power needs to be $39,000 today. I'm not anywhere, I'm not going to get that, because there are no COLAs. So, in order to get good police officers, you have to be competitive. So the city of Hagerstown has never been competitive when it came to funding their police department. And they're going to need to do that, and they're going to need to have a better retirement. And I'm sure it would be nice if they did start to give a call to some of the retirees. There's at least three other retirees that are in here. I did not see any more than that, I might have missed some. But we're all in the same boat, so we all have to continue to work. I'm 63 years old, and I'll probably have to get another job. Right now, I'm not working, but you're going to have to get better. And in order to get police officers to come to the state of Maryland, Senator Cordman, you're the only one that's going to be able to address this. You need to get back Leebor. And for those who don't know what that is, it's a law enforcement officer's bill of rights that was taken away from our legislation a couple of years ago. Thank you.
Next we have Paulette Lee.
Hello, thank you very much for holding this meeting. I am a homeowner in Hagerstown. I'm also, I've been very active with the Refugee Welcome Network. This is not what I came here to talk about, but I do want to note that anybody who believes that immigrants who come here, whether or not they have the documents that you think that they should have, do not automatically constitute a threat to the community. I am also appalled by not just the politicking that goes on, but the bigotry that I hear labeling people by their, whether they, what they need support, and what their religion is. It's absolutely ridiculous and it's shameful that people do speak that way. Now, you were talking about public safety, and I want to ask you, I want, oh, I guess we're not talking, oh, we are talking about public safety, okay. I want to ask you, am I safe right here, right now? There was no security when I came in here. I'm in a room full of gun advocates. Okay? So I'm in a room full of gun advocates who might not like what I have to say. Am I safe here? It seems to me that this county is more concerned about the safety of gun owners than they are about, well, me, or anybody else who might not be carrying a gun. It's interesting, because yesterday's Herald Mail, their front page story, was on firearms being, quote, "The leading cause of death for children and teenagers in the U.S. for the third consecutive year," unquote. This is, this came from a just-published report by the Johns Hopkins Center for Gun Violence Solutions. That report says that in the U.S., quote, "Gun death rates in the age group of 1 to 17 have increased since 2013." And it goes on, and I don't have a lot of time left, but I do want to point out to you that as of August this year, that last month, there were more than 100 shootings since 2021 in Hagerstown. The Johns Hopkins Report has several recommendations for how communities can save lives from gun violence. Pro-lifeers, take note. Not one of which includes being a sanctuary for the Second Amendment, which Washington County became in 2020. I'm asking you to protect my not-gun-carrying rights as well. Thank you.
Next is Patty McFarlane.
Good evening. My name is Patty McFarlane. I live on South Potomac and Baltimore. I'm literally in the thick of it. We've had so many things happen in our community. We've got such wonderful people living in our neighborhood. And yet, every day, we fight and we deal with constant drug dealers, junkies, homeless people stealing our items from the back of our yards, coming to our yards and stealing our bikes, stealing our plants, ripping our plants off, vandalizing our homes. We've had a drug dealer come over and take over an apartment. Literally, two houses, two doors down from my house. The drug dealer came and took over this apartment and started having prostitutes coming in and out, working. I was standing there, literally watching every day. We called the police every day. We have so many wonderful neighbors, and they were calling, and they were doing the online reports on the Washington County website. Nothing was getting done. And the thing is, that they were squatters. He came in and he took it away from the guy that was living there. The guy left because he was terrified. And then here comes a drug dealer, and they're doing all these drug deals, and they're, you know, passing on all these prostitutes and all these junkies standing in line for drugs. We were dealing with this every day. The young lady that lives next door to me has three little children. They have not been out all summer long. Not one time has she let these children play in the backyard or play in the front of the house. We're scared. I literally begged the police officers, "Please do something. Take these people." They're literally doing crack right in front of the police officers. I was standing there, I filmed it. I filmed it on Facebook, I went live. We dealt with, we've been dealing with this ever since I've moved here, and I've been here for three years. If I would have known what I've known now, I would have never moved here to Hagerstown. I would have stayed in Virginia. But I do love my home, and now this is part of me, and I'm going to fight. And I fight every day, and I stand in front of my house every day. And I say hello to everybody that walks in front of my house, because I want those junkies to look at me and see me. I want them to know that I'm here, that I'm staying, that I'm fighting for what I love, which is Hagerstown. But you guys need to do the same thing. We spent $70 million on that baseball field. Lovely, I love it, it's great. But why didn't we spend that for the police department, for our buys? We are understaffed. The police department is understaffed by 30 officers, maybe. All I'm asking that you guys, please, listen to us and help us out. We're here, we're investing in Hagerstown, we're here to stay. Please, make it easy for us to want to stay here. Thank you.
Next we have Michael Stout.
Good evening. Most people in here probably have heard of me from Hagerstown Press. Hagerstown Press. Okay, I'm going to say this, that I'm here not as a Democrat or a Republican. I'm here to help Hagerstown. So all this political crap I hear goes out the window because I'm the Democrat that votes for some Republicans. So them Democrats are probably going to hate me for saying that. But I vote for the best person on the ballot. Now, to the issue. I live in the East End. I wonder how many people in here can tell me where the East End is? Where the old sheets just left on Washington and Cannon. All right, you understand what we went through in our neighborhood for the past five years. Pure hell. And I came to your meeting four years ago, going to holler at you about the election, but congratulated you what you did that night, gave us a pay raise. But I also pointed out that homeless are coming. And Scott, the city administrator back there, can tell you that I have, pardon the French, bitched at the city council for four years about the situation going on. I go around my neighborhood with, in cooperation with the health department, giving me the equipment, picking up used needles. When I pick up 3,400 in a two-block radius in a year, something's wrong. So your needle exchange program is not working. Second of all, I invite everybody in here to go out in that hallway and take a look at that $6,000 machine that was purchased to put the spray that saved people's lives. It's empty out there. They should have put that machine in my neighborhood. That machine sits, I invite you to go out there and take a look at it. It's everything they need to shoot up dope, locks, the Narcon. I took the training, and believe me, believe you me, I have given it to people to use. Take a look, three machines, one in the hospital, one in the health department outside, out there where the old county market was, and one here. Who in the world come up with that idea to put one in the library? That's insane, and that's your money. So I invite you, I'm not going to criticize anybody, because as far as I'm concerned, we're all at fault. And I'm going to be honest, I was probably the biggest thief, drug user, and liar in this room at one time. But I cleaned myself up without any program, and they got to remember this. The drug user has got to want to help himself before you help him. Thank you.
Next is Juanita Smith.
Don't have a whole lot to say, guys, a little bit. I'm for button, do you push it where I prefer. Is it on? Okay. I live in the East End, but not right there. I live more towards Interval Road between Pangborn Boulevard and Brookline. I just recently experienced a drug bust right across from me.
Get the distance right.
Right across from me. Right across from me. Up a darn. All right. That was very scary. Happened around nine, as a matter of fact, last Tuesday night, on the 10th. Watching the presidential debate, and then all of a sudden you hear outside your street, "Get down on the ground, get down on the ground." Cops all around. Next thing I know, my roommate tells me, "Get down on the floor, because my bullets might start flying." So they finally arrested the guy, took him in. And now he's out on bond. I hope he gets a maximum, I really do. Because it's real, I was born and raised here in Hagerstown. And it makes me think about leaving. I own my parents' home, both my parents are gone. And I thought I'd live there for the rest of my life, but I don't think so now. I really don't. And then the other thing is, not quite as bad, but people fly up and down that road on Interval, like there's no tomorrow. There should be another stop sign there at Interval and Division. There's one, I have Division, but there should be another one to keep them from flying up and down the street like maniacs. But the biggest thing, yeah, is public safety. I'm ashamed of Hagerstown. Never used to be this way. I remember walking down the streets of Hagerstown when I was a kid. You'd hear Christmas music playing, you had Rosens and Woolworth and all that. Today, sir, when I went to the courthouse and went up to the police station, especially here in courthouse on Main Street, I saw a lot of characters I didn't care for, like they're homeless or something. And then, and before, when I was down here at Hagerstown, go to the lawyer's office, I saw homeless people sleeping on the side, like, you know, out of sight somewhat. It's amazing to see the change in 60-some years. I hope we get better. I really do, it's my hometown, but makes you think. That's all I got to say, sir. Thank you.
Next is Bradley, I believe it's Tom. Could be, North Avenue.
Yeah.
Apologies.
My name is Bradley Jones. I'm a master plumber for Bob Jones Plumbing here in Hagerstown. I've been here my entire life. We mainly only service Hagerstown, so, especially the downtown area, we're always downtown. Now, my dad owns properties, and I've lived downtown since I've been 18, like downtown. I used to live across from the old YFA. And then I moved to 40 East North. And I just recently moved out into the North End, where it's a little bit calmer. I'll just tell you what I've experienced in downtown for, I don't know, 10 years. It's progressively gotten worse. Before, it wasn't so bad. When I lived across from the old Y, you know, you get drunks, especially in the wintertime, people trying to get into your apartments. I've actually had somebody make their way up two flights of stairs through a locked door and then walk into my apartment, look at me, and fall asleep on my couch. So I moved from there, went over to Mulberry, outgrew that house, that was a decent area. It was already down by Pangborn. And then I moved back into downtown on East North. Well, there, it's just progressively gotten more interesting. Not including the guy who got shot twice in the face in the alley out back. He was a drunk, drunk dealer. I have to get a court for that still, because I provided some video. But you got that, and then you got the drug dealers out front where it's 105 degrees, but they're going to wear a hoodie and a ski mask, and they just walk up, you know. The drug users park their car up the street from the corner store down there, walk up, do their drug deal, walk back, back and forth. Kids, maybe 17, 18, they'll say stuff to you, try to pick fights with you. You got people, I watched a guy who was in my bag working at my van. He literally pulled his pants down while he was walking, and it was just urinating, just kept walking. Not including at our apartments. Last week, I had a vehicle, and this is across from the old YFA. I had some tools thrown out of my van. some tools thrown out of my van. Our submachine got broken into, and they graffiti the garage out back. Not including the past few years of what drugs have done to this city. I mean, I understand people are trying to get help, but it is a little bad. I mean, we did have two residents die and then, since they had no family because of their addiction, they rotted. Try cleaning that up. It's kind of soupy, but anyhow. So we had to deal with that. Then we had tenants die from overdoses, heart them out, and that was just a couple of years. And it's just progressively gotten worse. They don't care. So I don't know what the solution is. It's, it's a downhill, in fact.
Thank you.
Next is Bertie Erismendi.
Good evening. In May of two thousand twenty-two, I was hired by the city of Hagerstown in the newly created position of Community Engagement Officer. The main role of this position is to increase speed on the streets in downtown, engage in existing businesses to continue to grow their customer base, and to attract new businesses to the Main Street District. Since two thousand twenty-two, between the Office of Community Engagement, Parks and Recreation, and over fifty outside organizations, over two hundred events have been hosted downtown. It's important to note the number, because with the exception of Marin City Council and Commissioners Barr and Klein, I haven't seen the elected body before us here tonight attend any of these events. It fascinates me that the focus of conversation tonight circulates around four targeted incidents that occurred within the city, while the mentioning of over two hundred downtown events is noticeably absent. I would like to thank the Hagerstown Police Department for their unwavering efforts every single day in our city. In addition, multiple social agencies are in the streets doing the Lord's work, and we wouldn't be where we are as a city without them. And I would be remiss not to mention that we have never, let me repeat, never had a safety concern at any of the events we've hosted downtown. I'm left wondering, at what point did the city and its elected body become your chosen enemy? But tonight's focus is on solutions, to which I come before you with the following. Number one, show up and be present with your city constituents at downtown events that occur outside of Meredith's Park. Number two, inciting fear on social media is not a good look, nor does it prompt any effective solutions for us to move forward as a community. Number three, as elected officials, you have a simple yet extraordinary opportunity. Use uniting language on social media instead of divisive. During my time working in Washington County, I've only seen the latter. Imagine the difference you could make.
Next is Taj Smith.
They're working, okay. Good evening. My name is Taj Smith. I reside at one-three-five-eight Salem Avenue here in Hagerstown. I am here not only as a city resident and small business owner, but also as the president of the Washington County NAACP and board member for several local nonprofits. First, I want to emphasize that I have never felt unsafe in the city of Hagerstown. When we compare our crime rates to similar-sized cities, we see that we are not facing extraordinary amounts of crime. We do not have more safety issues than other cities in the county. We simply just have more people. Instead, what we are witnessing are the long-term effects of Reagan-era economics and policies that have contributed to poverty, homelessness, and addiction in our community. Research clearly shows that poverty is a significant driver of crime. Until we confront social justice issues like poverty and addiction head-on, we will struggle to create meaningful change. The narrative that the city administration has done nothing to address these issues is simply false. I've been in meetings with city officials, nonprofit leaders, and the city police. I can assure you that collaboration is happening. To truly make a difference, we need to focus on issues such as food insecurity. Mental health services must be accessible throughout the county. The reality is that individuals facing these challenges often gravitate towards areas with available resources. And this is what leads to the optics that there are increased needs in our cities. If you lack transportation or unhoused or have addiction, you're unlikely to find the support you need in places like Hancock, Clear Spring, or Boonsborough. The concern should be countywide, and the responsibility to act should not just fall on the city. If we genuinely wanna create change rather than incite hysteria during an election period, I urge you to prioritize fully funding our schools and providing adequate support for food insecurity, mental health, and addiction services. It is also essential to encourage other cities in our county to do their part, ensuring that we prioritize people over profit. Criminalizing homelessness, addiction, and poverty is not the solution. Research shows that this approach not only fails to reduce crime, but often worsens the situation. The leading cause of youth-related theft is food insecurity. We should be concerned that our children feel so desperate that they resort to stealing to feed themselves. Ultimately, it costs more to incarcerate individuals than to provide support services. It is far more effective to treat addiction and serve the poor and unhoused in our community than to punish those who are struggling. If we are to be of one heart and one mind, we will have no poor among us. That should be the goal. Hagerstown is safe, inclusive, and thriving, yet there is still much work to do. Thank you.
Wes Mixter? Mixer?
First off, I'll stand for a good reason. I used to work here a few years ago, security. I don't know, they were sitting them chairs down around the window because of the homeless. I used to volunteer for holidays, come in for the bedbug man. And, but I don't want y'all leaving it itchy and scratchy up here. It was a chair down along the way. But, I mean, that's true, but then final straw, why I'm not here no more. When individuals used to come in with their pants half down, I'd say nicely, hey, home, why don't you pull your pants up? Because we want to see your diaper. And it would work, and then the elderly would come over and say, thank you, sir. That was disgusting having to see that. And I got called in, pulled in by administration three days later. That's a fashion statement. You can't see that anymore. So roughly after that, I quit because I said, I'll let them come in naked. But anyway, that's not the real reason. I mean, I just, that's why I'm standing. Western Heights Correctional Institution. I moved here thirty-seven years ago, right in their main path. And you would not believe the trouble. It was during the summer, or I wouldn't have never moved there when school was out. The stuff we put up with, broken windows, tires slashed. And the principal and the officer there, they come down for three minutes in a Mark Cruiser, but they leave when the the main group comes down, like you're scared. And I'm at Wits End. Senator Quarterman was great about twelve years ago. He was a councilman with Mayor Bruchey. They're the only two that showed up. And we had a meeting of western heights and really addressed our concerns, and that's the main reason I'm here. I'm there for a lot, it's a lot of elderly people around there, and they're just scared to death. They all make sure they're inside when this group comes down. It's the walkers. And I'm sure there's some good kids up there, but I offered to put a fence up and be the warden up there, because like I say, it's Western Heights Correctional Institution. So thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeannie Avila.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Avila. And I'm gone again. I'm here, I'm gone. Here I am. My husband Steve Wright, and I recently bought a house just a couple blocks down on South Potomac Street. Really excited to take advantage of and enjoy all the wonderful improvements, all the cultural things that have been happening here in Hagerstown, and they are wonderful. A lot of, a lot of wonderful things happen. Having said that, I am also the neighbor of that fabulous woman Patty McFarland, who was up here earlier talking about the drug use in our neighbors' houses. First of all, I would like to thank the police who have been coming and answering our calls and doing what they can. And also the city or the police who have put up a security camera for us. It has become a very difficult situation. I am for compassion for all sides of this. I'm a singer. I'm a performer. I have performed benefits for NOVA, which is a victims' rights organization, and for immigrants, and for people, you know, who have drug problems. I've done all kinds of benefits. And there needs to be compassion on all sides as the pendulum swings. And I don't really care about the politics of this, but as the pendulum swings back and forth with more compassion for one side or stricter rules on the other side, we need to find the happy medium. We need to find where everybody is helped and everyone is protected in our community, because it is a beautiful community. I've lived here since two thousand and five, and it's really a pretty amazing place. So I don't really have anything else to say, but thank you for your time.
Next is Jamar Robinson.
How y'all doing? My name is Noble. I've heard about a lot of problems going on in this community, but I haven't really heard any strong solutions. I feel the main problem is the labeling, targeting, and looking down on individuals rather than thinking of a way to help. I'm trying to present a program. The microphone. Trying to present a program called MAPS. That's the mental ability to power itself. If individuals create a map of success, and there's someone with the proper mentorship and leadership to help them do this, they have no choice but to succeed in life. I come from all of that. I come from the selling drugs, gang banging, prison, anything someone can name. I've been there, done that. I've utilized the proper resources to correct my behavior and operate through a capacity of intelligence. There's a breach in communication when it comes to the individuals that are in position to help and the connection to the people that need the help. If people don't fully understand the position of the individuals that need the help, they don't really understand how to properly create this map of success for them to better themselves. I've reached out to several different people to see the proper platform. I don't even know if this is the proper venue to present it, but being coming from a past life of certain things, I'm well-respected by a lot of different individuals who need help. I have five children I take care of. I can't help myself. That's just being honest about it. So sometimes I'm able to give advice on resources for them to utilize, but that's like a cartoon. Once you give them that, they're stuck. Like, which way do I go? And they don't know what to do with the information. The people that are in position of these programs, they do not know how to properly create that map for these individuals based on their individual needs. They have pretty much a, I feel, an institutionalized strategy that they offer to everyone. But sometimes it's based on the individual need, what each individual is dealing with, and what is needed for them to better their situation. People have to want to better themselves. The program that I'm speaking of, MAPS, I have
Thank you so much. Next, we have Nancy Allen.
I'm afraid to sit down. Thank you for having this event this evening. I very much appreciate the opportunity to have a voice and to speak to all of you about what we have going on here in Hagerstown. And I was just about to leave, and you called my name, and I thought, well, okay, I'm gonna come up and say what I need to say. And that is this. We do have a public safety problem here in Hagerstown. And to not believe that we do is not reality. I live here. I work here. I try to promote this city because of my profession as a railter. But I can tell you that when people come into the area and you're trying to show a house, and you arrive a few minutes early, and while you're there, you look around and you observe drug deals, and you also get out of your car, and there's the smell of marijuana in the air. This evening, I had to move my car several times when I went to Target, because every space that I pulled into, I could smell marijuana when I got out of the car. And I didn't wanna smell that. I don't think I should have to smell that. I think that policies and regulations that we have put into place by our state legislature and also by our local officials here have helped to create a disparate impact of a problem that we have, are now realizing with our criminal activity. I also feel that we have a misconception about some of the residents that we have attracted to our area. And while I am very understanding of people's needs and their desire to have a better life for themselves, I also understand that there's a cost to that and that as taxpayers here, I feel that we pay a lot of taxes. I think that our budget should be well-reflected in the services that we provide to all of our taxpaying citizens. And number one should be public safety. Number two should be schools, and number three should be lower taxes. And I know this is, these are three important points when people are looking to relocate to a community. That's why I feel it's very important here. I also feel that it's very important to fund our police budget, because we need to have officers that can live and want to be here because they're well-paid. And that's, you know, that's just economics. They have to be able to afford to live here and to be able to raise a family here. It's a wonderful place to live here. Honestly, Washington County has so many things offering for people that are coming into our community that I think we all can agree upon. But what I don't think that we need to let me backtrack here a minute. I think the public safety that we need to be able to provide to all of our citizens is paramount. And for that reason, I believe that we need to support our police department and their ability to do their jobs. When I hear the mom who talked about where she lives and the drug deals that she has witnessed, and also the prostitution that she has witnessed, I'm also hearing this from my neighbors as well. This is not the kind of community that we aspire to be. We have a lot of good things going on here in Washington County. We need to create an environment where everyone We need to create an environment where everyone feels safe. Thank you.
So that is everyone who signed up. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Christian Wright, so your hand up first.
Thank you, Paul, for having this. My name is Christian Wright. I'm owner of Wright Gardner Insurance. We are at 100 West Antietam Street, somewhat across from the Dagmar and in the thick of things, I would say. I have made myself known and been very boisterous to the city, city officials who have also responded when needed, but I've made it very clear, we have a problem and anyone who thinks we don't, call me tomorrow. I would also say that the police are very responsive when we need them, okay? Having said all of that, you wanted solutions, please fund our police. The funding did not work. This problem, it's not working and I believe that Paul Keifer and his crew need help because they respond and when I thank them, when they come, I speak with the individual police officers and they tell me they need help. From a state level, Paul, please, please look to either enforce, you know, give them the tools they need to enforce laws. For those listening, I am very much a supporter of giving people chances and helping. I support a lot of nonprofits and we have a lot of resources in our community. They too need help. I'm not certain how that looks, but they need help. However, and it's been said before, if someone doesn't want help, it's hard to get them help, okay? I'm talking about those that don't want help. I'm talking about those that will absolutely shoot up in the middle of the day in front of our building, will absolutely drop needles, will absolutely urinate, all of those things. One thing I would suggest, can you please look into making a ground Barbara Ingram for 1,000 feet? I think you have the authority to make that a drug-free school zone, which would encompass a lot of different things. And I think that's about it. I had another one, but I'll talk to you later, so thank you.
Anybody else who wants to speak? Right here, sir.
How y'all doing? My name is Joe Merble. I own some property here in Hagerstown, probably eight or nine buildings on all ends of town. But I have a couple that surely you gotta be concerned. They're on Mulberry Street and the alley there. You've got a, actually a shoe building there that's supposed to be a child's daycare center and a nursery center for small children, the whole second floor of that building. And they're sitting, I shot a picture, sorry to show you. They're sitting in the cubby hole in the alley in the side of the building, roll up door, smoking crack. I got pictures of snorting cocaine on my porch steps. They're up on my porch sleeping at night, plopping into my electric, got fans, laying in sleeping bags. I said, "What the hell are you people doing?" "Oh, we're just resting." I said, "You can't rest here, you're trespassing." You know what the girl says to me? She said, "You can't throw me off this porch." She says, "I get my mail here, you gotta give me a 30-day notice." I gave her about two minutes to get off that porch and they made tracks. But I'm just saying, I'm old school. I mean, I just, I mean, I worked, I've been in this county for 50 years. I mean, I've been here all my life, really. I mean, I've worked for 50 years, I'm retired now. I just think that we need to do some more policing of the areas. I come down Potomac Street where the beachly furniture is, I got a dock back in there. And I just slow down, look back in there, there must be 15 people back there on that dock doing dope, smoking crack, just having a good old time. I mean, why aren't we doing something to correct that? Like Mr. Wright said there, Christian said about the school zone. I thought Maryland had a law that you couldn't have dope within 10,000 square meters of the schoolhouse or anything like that, mandatory 10-year sentence for that. I mean, and we're gonna let that happen right there? The windows are open in the school and they're down there smoking crack, 20 foot from the school. On the whole second floor of that building, he's got kids. They're down there parking, I got pictures, I'll show you pictures. They park under red curb in front of my property. They park under red curb in front of the building, what a fire hydrant. Where did the building catch this fire? And all those kids are in there. I mean, there's just, I think the police could come see there a little bit more on what they do. I don't even see them down there, but I guess they come around. And there's a house down there, I guess I can say the address, 117. It's just full of drugs. My buddy's working up in the building there, Will Toasty, he owns Elite Electric, he's up there doing some electrical work. And he's standing right up there watching them. I mean, they're just in and out of that house all day alone. Like he said, "When are they gonna do something about it?" I don't know. And I'm not, I'm not the law. I mean, if you want to see these pictures, I have pictures here to show you what I'm talking about.
I encourage you to share this with your own folks.
And I have pictures, I mean, the side of my building, they're running trucks up and down the alley. It was never meant to run up and down that alley. See, man, I have a garage on the corner. And they hit the side of my building, tore the spouting, broke the roof trusses on the building. I had to put balusters in, I had to put concrete balusters down the alleyway to keep from hitting my building. And I do pay taxes, I think I paid something like $19,000 for city tax and county tax. My question is, what the hell does the county do for me? Because I'm in its city limits. The other thing is, I'd like to ask you a question, Mr. Quarterman. Did the state of Maryland with Pennsylvania and Virginia, did they not sue the pharmaceutical companies for the opiate crisis? Where did all that money go? Didn't we all get money from the state for that? Why can't we take the serious school about a city park, maybe not that building, but something like that? Turn that into a facility to help and do for people? Because there's a lot of people out there that need help and they won't ask for it either. But I don't know how much funding the state of Maryland got, if the state of Pennsylvania, state of Virginia got. I know they sued the pharmaceutical companies for causing opiate crisis. And I mean, it was a hell of a pile of money that was paid. So Maryland got some of that. Where did all that money go? I don't know. My time's up. I'm not a speaker. Thanks for your time.
This individual with the hat over here, saw your hand up earlier. Sorry, you with the glasses, be nice.
Hope it still works. My name is James Harbaugh. I live in the Summit Avenue in the 600 block. I moved there 15 years ago this October. And the reason I moved there, I went there at all times of the night and the day and it was a wonderful place to live. There was no crime, there was no drug dealing at that time. But in the past 15 years, in the last 10 years now, it has changed. I've witnessed all kinds of drug dealing going on where they've even had drive, where one car was parked in front, another one right behind it, they were pulling up, passing the money into one car and passing the drugs in another car. I totally agree with some of the people here, we need to fund our police. We're being constantly told that we do not have enough policemen to be able to patrol the south end of our town. I am currently, right now, I'm retired, my children are grown, living in Pennsylvania. But I'm very close with most of my neighbors in my area. We have several children in our area. I just recently, this past week, picked up a syringe and needle right in front of my house. They're doing drugs right in front of my house. We've got kids playing in my front yard. And that's just unacceptable for our children. They could fall on it, they could pick, some of them are curious, they're gonna pick it up, maybe prick themselves or one of the other kids. And I'm constantly being told, we do not have enough police to patrol. I am currently, right now, been asked by several of my neighbors to walk their children to school with 8 o'clock in the morning to Bestor Elementary because two of the girls were approached by a young man in his late twenties, early thirties. Of course, everybody kind of debunked that for right away and thought it was just the girls. I actually got, I actually told the parents I would walk the girls to school. So on the day after Labor Day, I walked the girls to school, say back 50, 50 yards from the girls because I just wanted to catch the little SOB. He did cross there at Chestnut Street and was so focused on those little girls, he never saw me. Now, if I'd have got my hands on him, I don't know what I'd have done. But there was no police presence, there's nobody patrolling our neighborhood to make sure these children are safe. And it should be the number one thing in our minds right now. So please, we need to fund the police so we have some kind of security. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Name is Bill Clark. Have no complaints, do have maybe a very easy fix for some of the problems. 20 years ago, I was in jury duty and I was sitting in court and Fred Wright had handed down a verdict to someone that was in MCI. And he says, "You're getting five years and you'll have eight years of whatever they do that afterwards." The last thing he told that person says, "If you don't go back to New York where you came from, New York City, and we find you in Martian Encountering," and he comes before me, "you'll end up spending the other eight years at MCI." So the question I would ask is, are judges still able to say to a young man or a young woman or anybody that's in the court system that is in MCI? Are they asking them, can they, are they allowed to send them wherever they came from? Because we seem to get a lot of them here in Hagerstown. They come from Baltimore, they come a lot of different places and they end up staying here. And that could be, you know, that's resources that's being spent on them and also on the police department to take care of. Thank you.
My name is Taylor Smith. I'm a Marine Corps veteran. And I just want to say thank you for all the police officers that's in your life, I really do appreciate it. I am an entrepreneur. I own a private equity company, manufacturing facility. I employ over 20 employees here in Washington County. And I keep seeing, everybody's putting the blame on the government, right? But what we're not seeing is taking a step back and looking in the mirror and taking ownership and it's everybody's problem, not just the government's problem. And when we keep putting resources for all these nonprofit organizations and going after for-profit organizations, not to profit, I just want to remind everyone that for-profit organizations keep this country going. That's why nonprofits are funded, that's why government is funded. So we need to stop blaming everyone else and take a step back and look at the full picture. We are not here on this earth for government handouts. We need less, less oversight and start policing one another. Thank you.
How's this work? Just push to play. Should be orange, it's just, hello?
Good evening. Okay, so several weeks ago, I submitted an editorial to the newspaper about the Washington County Sheriff's Department and Maryland State Police coming in to help HPD with situations. And just to confirm, it wasn't with investigations that I was suggesting, it was with patrolling and surveillance. For example, the catch people were running red lights, speeding down North Potomac Street, speeding out the dual highway. Another example is in Howard County, a couple weeks ago, the Maryland State Police stopped the person for inoperable taillight. So one thing led to another, there were drugs in the car, weapons in the car. So I just wanted to confirm what I meant with Washington County and Maryland State Police coming in to help with surveillance and patrol in the streets of Hagerstown. Thank you.
How's everybody doing? My name is Tim Fisher. Senator, I don't know if we're a city under siege, I'm not qualified. And I don't really know how we quantify that or qualify it. But I do know that we are a city in need. I know that we are a city in need of communication. I know that we are a city in need of collaboration. I'm thankful for all of the state and county officials who are here tonight. I would love to see some city officials at this table as well. We are a city in need of cooperation. But mostly, we are a city in need of each other.
There's some ancient.
You know, I think this microphone is a great example of what we need. Because I'm pretty sure that nobody's gonna get fired tomorrow because this microphone didn't work. And I'm pretty sure that no one's gonna do the research to say, "Did a Republican build that microphone? Did a Democrat build that microphone?" I'm pretty sure Pastor Mike, what we would do is just fix the microphone. And one thing, one thing I know for sure, President Barnes, that there are enough intelligent, capable, good-hearted people, not only in this city or in this county, but in this room, to make the difference that we need. There's some ancient wisdom, Pastor Mac, that says, I keep calling y'all, brother, I'm sorry. Pastor Mac says, "How can two walk, how?"
"How can two walk together unless they agree?" And I think it's time and high time that we set aside the things that divide us and we focus on the things that unite us and that we come together to find some solutions. And the last thing I will say is that I'm pretty sure that there's a lady in the harbor that still says, "Send us these." The tired, the homeless, and the huddled masses yearning to breathe free. It's our job to figure out how we're gonna do that and make it work for all of us together. Not apart, not separated, not divided, but together. Together, we can do this, divided, we cannot. That's all.
I wasn't going to speak tonight. My name is Matthew St. Dusty. I was actually born here in the old hospital in 1980 during a snowstorm. And I've lived everywhere in the world from New York to Philly to Rome and back to Hagerstown. I ended up here because I was homeless. And I want to thank the city of Hagerstown, Washington County, and the state of Maryland for helping me get back on my feet. I don't think anybody in this room knows what it's like to be down and out and need help and then ask for that help. It's very hard, it's very difficult and it takes a lot to do. And I am not ashamed now to say, I live in Potomac Towers, I'm on food stamps and I am on welfare because I need that help. But I am willing to give that help. And I don't know about people who don't want that help, but I will say this. I put myself through a paralegal certificate program at ACC. I'm currently looking for work in the paralegal field. And if anyone in this room wants to do something about what's going on in this town with drugs and with the homelessness, really wants to do something constructive, I don't have the solution, but I am willing to help. So if anybody needs help, I'm here.
I don't like to public speak, very uncomfortable for me. A lot of people in this room aren't speaking time-wise, but they're thinking, obviously, about what this, we're here for. And who wants to follow that gentleman that just spoke about working as a community? I live in, near the downtown core. I see everything that people are talking about, I have stories just like they do and concerns about everything. But I gotta say, because we're here with Mr. Quarterman, I know, I don't know him personally, but I can tell by his legislative history that he has the ability to work for a solution. Because in 2022, Senate Bill 474 got passed. It is a lot of money and the people that can't ask, as needy, there are people who are in business who can ask. And it's a lot of money. And the people that can't ask, as needy, there are people who are in business who can ask. And he has found a way to satisfy, has found a way to satisfy their need. And anybody can look up Senate, Maryland Senate Bill 474 and see what that criteria is. And it's an active group. They meet every month. It's a public organization. But they are investing in the tri-county area out here. So if there's money, and I think that Washington County, there's a lot of money here. It's just how it's allocated. That there's an opportunity for Mr. Quarterman to shine and really do both ends of the spectrum. I think it's a possibility. You just have to have the will. Thank you.
How are y'all doing? My name is Christian Matthew Thomas Harris. I've been often, like, I'm listening. I know I'm seeing it on the streets, like the crime rates, especially on John Street. If you want to do something about the crime of the drugs, most of them is coming from Baltimore or through Hancock. But if you tackle that street and really dig down, you can nip it at the bud before it starts spreading more. Like, by reach, there's people laying on the walls, shooting up, especially by Seven Star. It's not pretty to say at all. It's quite an eyesore. But there is programs that are helping with some homelessness. And some is working, some is not. Because as one gentleman said, they're not going to really do it unless they really want. And right now, I'm staying with a girlfriend who just got out of incarceration like over a month ago. And it's been tough, you know. It's not that I'm trying. I got a rob date on my wallet, so, and my phone. So it's really hard trying to get a job with all the information needed, like social security and ID proper things. Get me up on my feet. And not too long ago, I lost everything. When I was incarcerated, everything I worked for 13 years gone. And just, so messed up. I was drinking. Me and my girlfriend got in a fight and this. I mean, but it's, you know, it's neither here nor there. But it's just this town, the city could be so much better than what it currently is. When I first arrived, when I was 13, it did not look like this. But most of the crime is coming up from Baltimore. Like, I know I hear it all the time. A lot of people are in DC. So if we can focus on that and see where the crime is most committed, I mean, where it is, and then we can stop from spreading like a tumor. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for your time. So I've heard some people point fingers at immigrants, at different religious groups, different political parties. I'd like to ask that we take a look at our current economic system. The current system is one of competition, not cooperation. It's one where the goal is to maximize profit, not maximize human potential. It's a system of every person for themselves. It's one that says, pull yourself up by your bootstraps. If you cannot or choose not to do so, then we quite literally have a cage for you. Yes, we live under an economic system. We're here in America, the land of the free. We have over 2 million people incarcerated and over 7 million in the criminal and justice system. Under the system, we pay people starvation wages. And when people take to alternate economies to survive, we wonder why. Under this system, nonprofits exist to help try to stop the bleeding from the wounds of poverty. It wasn't until I moved to Washington County that I heard of a competition between nonprofits to see who can raise the most funds. Under this system, we can literally send billions of dollars to other countries in the form of weapons with which this country and its allies can spread war, death, violence, destruction, and in some cases genocide, all over the world in our name and with our tax dollars. So while the price of eggs, gas, and basic necessities rise, so do the profit margins of the world's biggest drug dealers and weapons traffickers, Pfizer, Bayer, BAE Systems, Lockheed Martin, just improves and just continues to go up. We, as a country, use the threat of violence and sanctions to get our way all over the world. And then in the same breath, we wonder why there are school shootings and gang warfare. There is a connection with the violence. Under this system, a woman literally has to work and sell her labor so that she can then take the money she has earned and give it to someone else to watch her children. Under this system, a children, a child can grow, work, grow up, working hard to get good grades and go to college only to be shackled with student loan debt. So I'd like to point a finger at the system itself. We have a society of haves and have-nots. And we unfortunately have poverty. As a, as a solution or as some solutions, I would encourage our elected officials to make a bill that, that creates a living wage for all employees, including police, including educators. We can fully fund the local school board budget. That would also be an excellent step in the right direction. Because, you know, ultimately, we, it's, it's probably easier to build strong children than repair broken men, in the words of Frederick Douglass. And how about a four-day work week? Why not a four-day work week? We've been working the five-day work week, 40 hours, for over 100 years, and we wonder why there's a mental health crisis. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much for your time.
See if I can get this thing to work. Yep, it works. I wasn't originally going to speak tonight. I just wanted to sit here and take care of all this in. But there were so many good comments from so many different perspectives, I had to come up. We have a crime problem, but we also have appearance of a crime problem. And there's a disconnect between the appearance and reality. If someone doesn't want help, it is very hard to give them help. Right now, there are absolutely people in Hagerstown and Washington County who don't want help. But it appears that those who do want help are suffering because of it. The first step in identifying a problem, I'm sorry, the first step in solving a problem is identifying that problem. The data you've collected here tonight is critical to identifying the true problems in Hagerstown and Washington County. I'd like to encourage you, don't look for the Republican solution. Don't look for the Democrat solution. Look for the solution that benefits everyone. Thank you. Have a wonderful night. Thank you very much for setting this up. Well, again, thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. Really appreciate you guys taking time out of your evening and your day. I think it is evident by the amount of people who showed up today. Regardless again, as Mr. Walker said, of political affiliation, that this, there are concerns here in our city. And I appreciate all the great dialogue we had here this evening, some re-agreement themes. I heard additional services and resources for those in need, and a lot of champion for our city police. And first, thank our city police for everything they do for our community. Along with the men and women who patrol our city each and every day. It is very evident, though, in the discussion here this evening, and as we've seen already, discussions, we need to do a better job, a better job taking care of those individuals. So I would implore our city council, our city administration, as they are going forward, to hopefully achieve those goals. I think it's no coincidence that I saw recently, there's going to be a wage reopener with the, with the city police union. I think a lot of it is a direct result of the conversations that happened here this evening, as well as over the last couple of weeks. Our office, as we always have been, remains committed to the city of Hagerstown. I live in the city, just like many of you. Born and raised here. Will most likely be here until my time is over. You know, when we sent that letter many weeks ago, you know, it raised a few eyebrows and some people got upset. But I also know, and again, clearly from the individuals that were here this evening, that I'm not the only one that feels that way. And there are a lot of concerns here in the city. I appreciate the city council, as Commissioner Harvey said earlier, having some conversations and some meetings with some other stakeholders. But it should be noted, again, it's been said here earlier this evening, they chose not to participate here this evening. They are here, and I do appreciate some of them being here. But when we sent our letter nearly seven weeks ago, outside of Councilmember Alshire, our office has yet to receive a response from any other member of the city council or the mayor in regards to that, that letter. We have yet to be invited to a conversation, many of the workshops they've held in regards to that letter. Instead, they have chosen to dissect the letter in a way that they could hopefully maybe avoid some responsibility. I don't think that's their true intent. I think they do obviously care about our community, they want to work through some of these issues. But as been said here this evening, if we're really going to fix some of these issues, there has to be collaboration. So if you may not like what I have to say sometimes, but we have to collaborate. We have to continue to work together and have that dialogue. I appreciate the commissioners being here this evening. I appreciate, again, some of the council members being here as well. But if we're truly going to fix some of these issues, it takes conversation, it takes dialogue like we had here this evening, regardless if we agree or disagree. That's okay. But we have to have the conversation. So again, I appreciate everyone being here this evening. I'm allowed a few minutes here for comments from Commissioner Barr and Commissioner Harvey. But again, I want to thank each and every one of you here this evening for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. The time is getting late, and I'll be very brief. I want to thank everyone who came out this evening, particularly the 37 or 38 that have spoken. I think we've heard you. We know that the citizens of Hagerstown or citizens of Washington County, we're all in this together. We look forward to working with both the city, the county, and the state police in making Hagerstown a more enjoyable place to live, work, and play, if you will. And we have such a great city. We have a lot of amenities that many other cities, much larger than us, have no understanding, have no access to. And we can, we can just do better. So with the full cooperation of county commissioners and working with other elected officials, we look forward to taking all these notes from tonight and dissecting them and just working together. Appreciate it.
Thank you to everyone for being here tonight. I echo those comments and just make a couple of, a few observations here. I think our focus and what we heard tonight, the focus is not just about violent crime, and that's a distraction. If we focus just on the violent crime, a lot of what we've been hearing, especially from Patty McFarland and others in the communications, you know, I have received, it's about all kinds of crimes, property crime, vehicles being damaged, homes being damaged, property being stolen from homes. And, you know, the answer has to be that those will be investigated and pursued, especially when there's video of the perpetrators who did it. And they're told, I'm sorry, you should just file with your own insurance company. That doesn't help deter or prevent crime in the future. But that said, you know, we have the city of Hagerstown, and they have some challenges, and it's unfortunate they weren't here. They've done some good work illuminating some of the issues. But what I've observed and what I've been focused on for a long time is trying to add to the discussion about improving the police force. I believe that the police force in Hagerstown needs to be well-paid. They need to get good benefits. It needs to be rebuilt to the size it was at least eight years ago. It is understaffed, underfunded, in order to do what is necessary. A couple of weeks ago, during one of the city hearings, the police chief said to the county, to the city councilman, we are doing a good job, given the resources we have, or words exactly to that effect. The questions that should have followed from that are, what are you not doing that you should be doing? Are you doing, do you need more resources? Are there, you know, how, how are you operationalizing what you're doing? And is there something that we can help you with, either with authorities or ordinances or more money? You're, you have not enough police officers. They can't recruit very well, and they can't retain. And it's not just because of what's going on in the broader police environment with the laws changing in the Bill of Rights. It's because you can't be paid $10,000, $12,000 less at a starting salary than every other district around here. Washington County is pretty much at strength. Other counties are. Frederick City is. It's because of the pay and compensation. And I understand the city's going to begin to address that. I'm glad for that. I almost think they need to be paid more than what the county is because, in my view, it's probably a tougher job here in the city, given the dynamics at play. So I wish HPD well. I want them to succeed. Now, the county has its own lines of operations and authorities. And, you know, the city is a charter city. And, you know, there are some things we can help with, some things we can't. The, the county provides for the prison. The county provides for the 911 center. 35% of county police calls are coming into the city at this point in time. What are we paying for? You know, $45 million a year just for schooling for the students that reside in Hagerstown. When we talk about where the county taxes that city residents pay go, it goes to a lot of those things. And I believe from my analysis that the city actually receives more benefits from the county than we receive in, in revenue from all tax streams. And we'll work through that with the city in a collaborative way going forward. Now, some of our problems can't be addressed because they're related to state laws or federal policies. We heard some about immigration tonight. And as a person who spent most of their adult life working and living overseas and, you know, studying and living in Muslim communities, I understand the importance of understanding the human dimension. And, you know, Patty colored the lines really well here, talking about her experiences, Patty McFarland. But so did others. Those are real stories that we need to listen to. But the national policies also have an impact, and we can't change them. But immigration does have an impact on our schools. If you have nearly 1,700 English second language students here, it impacts affordable housing. Because you have hundreds, if not thousands, of families here picking up affordable housing. It does happen. We've got, we do have people here. This is, this is not, it's not the scaremonger or fearmonger. It's a reality that we have to deal with, okay? Legal immigration versus refugees coming in, which come in legally, it has to be aligned with an absolute capacity. Otherwise, communities pay a price. The 1.4 million legal immigrants we bring in are constructive and are integrated and it's planned for. But there are other issues when you have large numbers coming in. In, in our community, it does affect our schools. It affects our tax base. It affects our hospitals, and it affects our policing and social services. That's just a reality. I can debate what the scope is, what the scale of it is, but it happens. And that is not anti-immigrant. But you have to recognize the, the data so you can align responses appropriately to dealing with them. And in policing, I'll just say this about policing, you know, I believe you need good data. You need to understand the human dimension in your communities, what's going on. Not just the crime that's reported, but a lot of stuff that goes on that doesn't get reported. And contextualize it, as we got some of it tonight. And you need to be able to map it out, understand it neighborhood by neighborhood. And then you need to figure out how you're going to align your police forces, your organization, and operationalize it in order to respond appropriately in partnership with the county and the state, but also with all of the NGOs in the city and the social services. This has to be a comprehensive approach. There is not one silver bullet. You can't arrest your way out of it, but you need police to be effective and resourced. But you also need everything else in the basket. I could go on, and I love this, these types of topics because I, you know, I'm an analyst by heart. And, you know, we just need to have the data and be able to agree on what the data is, what it's showing us. And then we can begin to share some things that we might have the authorities to address with our budget and our legal authorities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michelle Gordon, again, here, county administrator. I'm a lifelong resident of Washington County. I lived in Hagerstown for probably 10 years in my early twenties. I remember vibrant downtown. I remember shopping at my foreies with my grandmother's I remember a fire in downtown. I remember shopping at my foreeys with my grandmother. She'd bring us down for the soda fountain. I remember buying my school clothes downtown and buying my first piano and the, I'm sorry, my first TV and grand piano. Together, I believe that we can bring back the downtown that I remember from my childhood. And I think the city is making great strides in, in doing some of those things by bringing businesses back to the downtown area. I'd like to thank all of you for coming here today. I'd like to thank our Hagerstown.
In regards to reentry, to try to help individuals reenter back into jurisdiction that they resided in when they, when they came here. And a lot of that comes down to successful reentry. You know, our, our community has a finite limited of resources. And we're doing a disservice to individuals who are released in our community without the proper support and the proper opportunities, proper transportation, things of that nature. And so we've continued to work, we'll continue to work, excuse me, on that. That's a piece of legislation we've worked on many years. Right now, to answer your question, that is not currently happening. So those are just a couple of things I've written down. Again, I want to thank everyone for being here this evening. I want to thank all of everybody who put in. And again, thank you for our law enforcement partners who came here this evening and everyone participated. Oh, and thank you, Lymer, for having us this evening. Sorry to keep you a little late.